Uh, will the clerk please take the roll?
Councilmember Danuski?
Here.
Councilmember Herbig?
Here.
Councilmember Curtis?
Present.
Councilmember Sperry?
Here.
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
Here.
Mayor Baker?
Here.
Thank you.
If you will please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, the next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. If there are no objections, or changes, or modifications, the agenda will stand approved as written. The next item then is a presentation. You know, I really look forward to some of these because we have some very, very bright people in our community, and I think when you hear about students like this, it really puts your mind at ease that the future of our country, no matter how badly we mess it up, is really going to be in good hands with the younger generation coming up. And so, the White House Commission on Presidential Scholars and the United States Department of Education selected Inglemore High School seniors, Nathan Morgan and Karina Lee, as candidates for the United States Presidential Scholars Program. Morgan and Lee were selected based on their academic scores on either the SAT or ACT exams, and are invited to apply for consideration as a Presidential Scholar. I've heard rumors that you guys were either perfect, or pretty darned close to it. Which is a major achievement, seeing as how I never got a high school diploma. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in 1964 by executive order of the President to recognize and honor some of the nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. In 1979, the program was extended to recognize students who demonstrated exceptional talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was again extended to recognize students who demonstrate ability and accomplishment in their career and technical educational fields. Each year, up to 161 students are named as Presidential Scholars and one of the nation's highest honors for high school students. I mean, that's pretty darned good. Two of them, top 161 in the country. I venture to say these two are number one and number two, and everybody else falls below them, but I'm kind of biased about our Inglemore High School and our North Shore School system. So, are Nathan and Karina here?
Yes.
There they are. Yay! Shall we get a picture with them, Leslie, if you don't mind? So, let's go over here by the flag if you want to, and let's get the council over here, too.
Wow, very cool. Congratulations.
Thank you, guys. Congratulations. See, how can this country be in trouble when you see students like that? All right. Next item on the agenda is citizen comments. This is an opportunity for you to express your views that are important to you and to the community, and we ask that you please try to limit your comments to three minutes. We have a new system up there. The lights will go from green to yellow to red. Nothing evil happens if it goes red, but we do ask you to try to wrap it up. People work hard to keep their comments at three minutes, so if you could do the same, we'd really appreciate it. With that, clerk, please call the first person.
Todd Prince?
Todd Prince, I live at 6706 Northeast 185th Street, here in Kenmore. So, thank you for your time, the work you do, and allowing me to speak. I do have concerns regarding street parking enforcement in our residential streets, specifically on Northeast 185th Street, between 68th and 66th Avenues, although this is probably also an issue that may be some of the other areas experience as well. As I mentioned, I live here. I take pride in the neighborhood. I will routinely help rake off the storm drains and pick up litter on the street, just to help things out. About 10 years ago, when I moved into the area and purchased the property, there was a lot of abandoned vehicle issues on this section of street. And vehicles left for months and weeks at a time, as well as commercial vehicles. During this time, I saw several break-ins, and even reported some myself, as the vehicles were left unattended. I didn't want this to become a neighborhood where car break-ins and other negative activity were happening, so through much diligence in reporting these vehicles and the police responding on these, over the course of a year, it really seemed to clean up. I was able, at least it seemed, to make a difference. My understanding is residential street parking is a 24-hour limited time period wherein vehicles are identified by the police. They'll typically be put a sticker on, and the officers will notify the owners, and they'll have about 24 hours to respond, to move the vehicle, and if not, it could be towed. In the past several months, with the new apartments where the parking ride used to be, and some of the other developments, this section of street is again becoming a magnet for street parking to be used as long-term vehicle storage and other activity. I'm now calling to report abandoned vehicles about once a month. Since October of last year, I've reported on over 21 vehicles that have been left without moving, and that's ones that have stayed for at least a week, on average. This doesn't account for the shuffling that goes on, where people are just moving them every couple days and doing that sort of activity. About 67% of those vehicles that I've reported are the same vehicles, and the number of vehicles that I'll be reporting again and again is growing. I feel bad when I have to call the abandoned vehicle line, because I know it's taking police officers away from other activity, but at the same time, I've also seen what happens when this goes unattended. While it's frustrating to be reporting the same vehicles, I'm sure it's also concerning to the officers and challenging for them, who have to continually contact the same owners. It seems that there are rules in place and policies for this, but I'm wondering if there isn't more that can be done, such as issuing tickets or other penalties to help discourage those who abuse and break the rules. This was not a big issue a year ago, and since then, it is becoming a concern, and my concern is, if we don't do anything today, what's it going to be like in a year, or in two years, if nothing is done? So, my hope is we can be proactive and not reactive. So, I do thank you for your time, and if there's any additional information needed or time, I'm happy to make it available to you.
Thank you, Mr. Prince.
Thank you.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mrs. Mooney, if you would be so kind, please, as to sign up after your three minutes. And we do have a new timing system, so we do ask you to please hold your comments to three minutes.
Okay. Elizabeth Mooney, 5934 Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. I am here just to say, in general, I think that the city should always stick... I was going to say religiously, but I don't want to use that word in this day and age. You know, it doesn't work. I think that it is absolutely critical that the city council tell the city staff and hold highest in your mind that our critical areas ordinances should never be nipped away at, with exceptions. Those were put there for a reason. You already allowed the 520 Bridge Project come in, and that was nipped away with a deferred maintenance. I don't know if it's an exception or what, but there used to be trees out there. It's disgusting now. I guess we're going to have the demolition of the bridge. The point is, if you keep letting our city staff, permitting director, whatever, manager, assistant manager, if you let our staff help you change our environmental laws, you're going to have death by a thousand cuts in whatever you want to count: trees, wetlands, streams. And then it ends up costing more, because if you look at what happened at Log Boom Park, where you're planning to put a bridge, which I'm fully supportive of, but that area was cut into its repairing zone with an exception called the PAUE, the public... I'm sorry, PAUE, that you're going to have the hearing about tonight. That's part of the reason that you're now going to have to pay for the bridge, is because the stream needs room, and it wasn't given room with concrete. I don't know how many minutes... Anyway, you should stick with your laws and not give exceptions to yourselves for environmental resources. You won't get them back.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mrs. Mooney, if you'd please go sign up.
Ann Anderson, 16304 81st Place, Northeast. The PAUE allows cities to fill in wetlands where cities deems necessary for recreation. And I am commenting today on this PAUE and object to your plan to use the PAUE without the need to do an environmental impact statement. I object to your bending the laws meant to protect our sensitive areas by you using an exemption to most likely harm a wetland and/or shoreline to make it supposedly friendly for ball fields, construction, or beaches. We see what is going on. You are so confident in your authority that you really don't even have to work to hide your agenda. We realize the decisions have already been made behind closed doors. As usual, money leads the way. Behind the doors, handshakes are made in the best interests of a few versus the many. I care about protecting the environment for my kids and for future generations, and fighting a good fight. These hearings are obviously just the bare minimum facade required to march through a process you've already determined. So, why do an environmental impact statement? Because your amendment to the code you give, you'll be able to use it again and again to harm our wetlands and to cut down trees. It's so wrong. Why don't you just stick with supporting our environmental laws and letting our critical areas stay protected? Please do not switch around mitigation in one area to get some activity in another, like putting a ballpark field and adding to a huge parking lot in the middle of St. Edward's is going to harm our ecosystem. Show us the evidence, and who are the experts are that going to assess this that will show, that will not cause a significant adverse environmental impact? I think the evidence shows your exceptions have caused harm to the environment. For example, Log Boom Park. Now my kids can't play on the beach. Now I'm finding out about dioxins and lead poisoning in the water. Where is the evidence that you don't need to do an environmental impact statement before you pass this PAUE? Give us more time. You've given us two weeks to make comments. I think the public's in the dark. We don't think our public should be getting around environmental laws. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Ms. Anderson?
If you could go, please sign up. Did you sign up for the hearing, or did you sign up for public comment?
Public comment, PAUE.
There's another one for the PAUE that's not public comment. It's for the hearing itself. If you signed up for that, that's all well and good, but if you'd please sign up for public comment. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Mr. Prince, thank you very much. Ms... Mr. Carlinsey? Marking 185th Street in that Ken... Have you... You're familiar with some of the issues, and if you could get with Mr. Prince?
Yeah, definitely, and work with our chief of police on some problem solving there. That'd be great.
Thank you. So, anything, yeah, to sort of help with this. Mrs. Mooney, Ms. Anderson, thank you for your comments. We are going to be discussing this issue tonight, and there will be a public hearing, and I do not believe our minds are made up. Next item on the agenda then is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
And I'll second. Any additional comments or questions on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda stands approved. Next item on the agenda is a Kenmore Business Incubator update. Mrs. Owsley?
I'd like to exercise my Fifth Amendment privilege.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The last time that we provided an update to the council on the Kenmore Business Incubator was last July. So, the metrics and a lot of the things that we're going to be talking about tonight were as of December 31st, 2015. I have some wonderful company up here with me tonight. I think you've met Cory Hanson, who is our program consultant. And then, we're really happy tonight that a couple of our companies have joined us. To my immediate left here are John and Shannon Hendricks, and they are some of the... One of the companies in our virtual incubator program, meaning they don't have office space at the incubator, but they work with Cory and with other similar companies in some of the entrepreneur sessions. And they'll be telling you a little bit about their company and their experience with our program. And then Toby and Alex Borromeo, and they are Kenmore residents, and they're in-house at the Kenmore Business Incubator, and they'll be talking about their company as well. I think their family are neighbors of yours, Deputy Mayor. So, kind of like, what's new? What's new is, this program has been up and running for three years, which is a pretty cool thing. It started in February of 2013, and there are six companies who are now in-house at the incubator. It's just about at capacity. And since the end of the year, there have been a few shifts. One company is getting bigger. One-person company has decided to shift to virtual status, but it's still at just about capacity. And you might recall that when we first started, we wanted more Kenmore-based businesses to be part of this program, and happy to say that four of those companies of the six are headed by Kenmore residents. Cory can talk about the client growth that we've had with the virtual incubator program. He's been really responsible for that, as well as the really good series of business seminars that he has presented. We continue our advisory group that is helpful to us, and one thing that we're doing more of over the last year or so is to get the companies together more. And we're going to be doing that in just a couple of days. And so, if anyone's free at lunchtime on Wednesday, let us know. Happy to have you join us. And then the other really interesting thing that we saw right from the very beginning is because of the location of this facility, it's been a really good statement to people who are on the highway or on a bus, because they know, "Oh, a business incubator in Kenmore." And we got to believe that some of that has enticed other companies to look to being in that neighborhood. Most notably, there's a new downstairs neighbor that is... Has been working hard to get the space ready. It's Karen Brewery Company. Jen Boyd is in the audience tonight, too. And so, that whole area has been growing up. So, we'll take a look then at some of the metrics that we've done, all by quarter, and you see that we are at 15 total businesses that either have or are now part of the incubator program. That's both the in-house and the virtual. And we're... For the in-house people, we're up to 16 employees at the incubator. And again, this is as of December 2015, so we're even getting a little bit bigger by now. And for the first time, our base rent has been offset by client fees. That's taking into account both the fees from the virtual incubator companies and the sublease fees from the in-house company. And so, you can see that the base rent for 2013 through 15 was $25.50 a month. That's gone up just slightly as of January of this year with a lease amendment, but we're still very much on track to cover that base rent. And also on track with budget. So, you can see what the 2015 expenditures were. Again, very much on track to come in, probably under budget. And with that, before we start talking about the companies, Cory, would you like to make a few comments about the work that you've been doing?
Thank you very much for this opportunity to present. We always... We have the fun part. We get to work with the companies, and so we thought we'd share that with you tonight. The growth of the number of companies has been fairly dramatic, particularly since we included virtual companies. And the virtual companies are really... These are local businesses that have... We've been able to reach out to and help them to grow their businesses. In one case, just recently, we were able to save one of those who had 14 employees. So, yeah, we hadn't talked about how many employees the virtual ones have, so... Yeah, well, you didn't ask me, and I didn't think of it, so... But we're looking at, just real quickly, I think about 30, 35 employees, local employees of these companies. And they're already starting to grow. Zika Salon is one of those. And we hope you get an opportunity to hear from them. But the focus has been on growing Kenmore businesses primarily, rather than recruiting from outside people who may or may not stay. And it's been... I think we've been very successful, because when I started a year and a half ago, we had four businesses, and at the end of the year here, we had 15.
Thank you. So, now you'll get to hear from the... Some of the companies. So, here are the in-house companies that, again, were there as of end of 2015. BizDiversity is the one that has... Is switching over to virtual status. And then Exotogames Studios, that company is growing. And so, that's... And they've been with us for almost three years. But Promed is Alex and Toby's company. So, you want to talk a little bit about your business?
Testing 123. Always wanted to do that one time. Just wanted to try it. Again, I'm Alex. It's my brother Toby. We started Promed Agency. We're a medical staffing agency, so we provide nursing professionals to nursing homes, hospitals, all around the Patriot Sound area. We actually just started back in April, and one of the first things we had to do was locate a place to run our business. And it just so happened that my dad drove by on Bothaway and saw the sign that said, "Kenmore Incubator", and he was like, you know, "What a great opportunity for business entrepreneurs, startup entrepreneurs, to utilize this incubator." So, we signed up and spoke with Nancy and Cory, and, you know, one of the first things was, it was affordable for startups. So, right there, right off the bat, was great. We can afford it. And second was just having access to all the information and the tools necessary for us to succeed. Cory has been great for us. He's helped us with, you know, one-on-ones, and as well as the Hot 100 and the 5X. We've attended everything, and it's just been a great opportunity for us to help grow. Anything you want to say?
No, no comment.
So, again, and Cory, you can help out with this, too, that incubators aren't just for high-tech companies. Tanga.com, that's headed up by Joe Van Dyke. He's a Kenmore resident. He is the IT Director of this already...
CTO.
CTO of this already established company, which is actually based out of state. But he is building a tech team here in Kenmore, and so has added a person to that team fairly recently.
Just... It's not something we get a chance to brag about, but that company also is an INC 500, Inc. Magazine 500 fastest-growing company in the country.
Exotogames, they've been with us for a while, and they are really set to grow now, developing a new game. And NK... N3K? It sounds like my initials, so I always go NK, but it's N3K. They are independent claims adjusters, and so, insurance claims. And then Perfect Financial?
Perfect Financial is a fairly new company that is scheduled to grow exponentially here in the next few years.
So, we'll go on to the virtual companies, and you can see that all of them have a presence in Kenmore. And so, we have with us tonight John and Shannon from Martian Systems. So, if you want to talk a bit about your business?
Sure. I'm Shannon Hendricks, co-founder of Martian Systems. And ironically enough, we heard about your program through the 5X Entrepreneur Series when we randomly attended a... when we randomly attended a Kenmore city meeting during the summertime last year. And that's how we discovered all about the virtual incubator process, as well as Corey's great classes, when we recently moved to the Kenmore area. So I'll let John take over from there as well.
Greetings, Earthlings. Martian Systems is an IT consulting firm specifically suited for small businesses. We're the modern-day equivalent of a digital plumber, where you'll have in-house IT systems that you're not quite big enough to hire a nerd of your own, but you kind of need a nerd for hire. And that's what we focus on. Much like shepherds, we need to have sheep, and that would be small businesses that need to have IT services. In most cases, they're dependent on them exclusively. And that's all we do 24 by 7. We had pick of the litter of where we want to locate at, and we chose Kenmore initially through happenstance. We had a friend who had a little cubby space left over, but after spending some time here seeing the incubator and seeing the amazing stuff that you guys are doing here, we decided to make our home just down the street here. Feel free to come by, free coffee. Not for you guys, for these guys.
And Corey, do you want to talk about the other companies on the virtual side that you've been working with?
So Endeavor Family Counseling is a youth counseling program. They work with at-risk youth and have developed some very innovative programs and have a contract with Snohomish County. Horizon View Homes is doing some very innovative things in remodeling, and then they're actually building some, getting some developments ready, not anything they've publicly announced yet, but that's looking very interesting. And then Starting Point Acupuncture and Wellness. And we're looking there at not only expanding, the business has been expanding quite rapidly. And we also are looking at some very, I don't know, I almost, I kind of brag about these companies, because they're doing some really wonderful things. And this clinic here is looking at expanding dramatically, perhaps as many as 20 clinics around the state, based on her unique type of practice. She's also a graduate of Best Year.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Yeah, Corey has been doing great work with these companies, and we're very, very proud of Corey and the companies. So there are four companies who have graduated or moved on over the last couple of years. So Connected Device, they were kind of our anchor tenant to begin with. And then Silver Kite has located into a space that really works for their business, just over in the very north Seattle area. Sync moved on, and then Lifestyles Express has moved on as well, has kind of reassessed or relaunched as a little bit different business structure.
I think it's called pivoting.
Pivoting, yeah, that's right. That's right. But it is really an honor and just a lot of fun to work with these companies. I have so much respect for people who, you know, kind of follow that ambition and that dream. And it's really fun for us to help them along the way as we can. So with that, have you answered any questions?
Councilmember Smith?
Well, it's really exciting to have some of the businesses here. And I appreciate all the work you've done, Corey and Nancy, on this. And it's always been a struggle trying to balance the benefit with the economics of it. And I will say, it's incredibly satisfying to see the businesses, a couple of the business owners here. And it's just, it's very satisfying to know that you've chose Kenmore to grow your business. And you're exactly where we wanted to, you know, part of the vision a couple of years ago, a few years ago. And so I just want to say congratulations, and I hope that you're getting everything you need in your support and everything. And I wanted to, I guess I had a question for Nancy or Corey on this, is just if you see any trends that you could tell us as far as what you're seeing in the type of businesses that you're seeing interest in, or where you may see this going over the next year or two, just any trends or things that are starting to look a little similar or setting
Interestingly, it's actually an educational process. So the consulting part is, I think they'd all agree that it's very helpful, but it's also the educational part. So it's bringing them together as a group and doing education that provides value. And then we take that and on an individual basis, we customize it for them. And in the end, they're the ones that do all the work. But it's good to have somebody to reflect back your ideas on. And so we find the same thing, that the trend is unfortunately that while there's a great increase in the number of innovation companies out there, and the whole venture capital community has certainly looked like it's exploding, and it has in many ways, but unfortunately, the failure rate of most of those has actually gone up. And so the result is that, and the reason is because they're learning to fail fast, but they're not actually getting the kind of training and everything. And the other part is, the local entrepreneurs such as these are the ones who stay. And that's another difference of technology companies, they have a tendency to go. So I think we're seeing that economic development is going to continue to focus more and more on the local gazelles rather than trying to import.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
Good evening.
Pleasure seeing you all here. The visa from the family, the mother that stuck. She was in for a hearing to see if she could get a visa to come back to her husband and children, and it was just denied. All right. Next item on the agenda is public hearing, receive public testimony regarding ordinance number 16-0417, consumption, sale, possession, and service of alcoholic beverages in city parks and the parks zone. Mr. Hampson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As you mentioned, this public hearing is for the public to comment on the proposed changes to the Kenmore Criminal Code and also the Kenmore Zoning Code regarding alcohol in parks. The proposed changes would, with the exception of Linwood Park, Moorlands Park, North Shore Summit Park, Wallace Swamp Creek Park, and possibly City Hall Park, which I can explain a little bit more in a little bit, would allow alcohol to be served in a city park through a special events permit or permitted use and approval of the Washington State Liquor and Cannabis Control Board. It would also define a city park in the code. It would also reward the prohibition acts to clearly distinguish between selling, opening a container, possessing an open container, and consuming alcoholic beverages in the city park. It would also delete the obsolete reference to the Kenmore Fairgrounds, and it would delete the prohibition language in the zoning code. And if you can remember, back on February 8th, we had an initial discussion regarding this topic during a city council meeting, and council suggested that we exclude Linwood, Moorlands, North Shore Summit, and Wallace Swamp Creek Parks. However, recently, Councilmember Danuski brought up the point about excluding the City Hall Park. And so for the purpose of this public hearing, it needs to include the exclusion of the City Hall Park. And if you guys want to exclude the City Hall Park, you'll have to, after the public hearing, make a motion to exclude the City Hall Park also. We have a question.
Councilmember Spurrie?
Thank you. Just for the purpose of clarification, what do you mean by City Hall Park?
It would be the City Hall property, everything from 181st to 182nd along 68th.
Okay, so we're not talking about the town green, we're talking about this area? Okay.
This area and also the skate park area to the north, and the future park between the skate park and the City Hall, if there's a park there someday?
Thank you.
Pretty much the property, the City Hall property.
Councilmember Danuski?
When I had questioned the exclusion of that, I was kind of thinking more of the skate park and future development over there, but our city manager did make a point that we could end up having a block party where we shut down this block and allow people to walk over here, possibly with alcoholic beverages. So that is something that sways me back, that maybe we don't need to exclude it yet and keep an eye on that.
Any other questions?
Do you want the questions now or after the public hearing?
We can go both. So if you want to do something, please go ahead.
Mine's not a question, it's a comment. I would like to see language added that says something like, "Future parks will be determined which pile they'll end up in, the exclusion pile or the acceptable pile." So right now, we've written it for the number of parks we have, but I think we need to be prepared for the future.
Councilmember Smith?
Actually, I see your point, but I don't necessarily know that it's necessary, because we've excluded. I remember we changed from inclusion to exclusion specifically, so we wouldn't have to amend the ordinance in that way. I see your point, but I would say that I don't know that that's necessary, because otherwise, every time we have a park named, then we've immediately got to address it as a change in the ordinance. And so I need to think on that one a little bit, but I would tend to not, I actually like just having the ones we know we don't want alcohol in, and then to me, that seems simpler. And for exactly what the city manager mentioned, would be also the reason that I would not generally be in favor of including the City Hall parcel in that. It's a big open space that we know is going to be connected. You know, it's 20 feet from what will be our vibrant town center, and I think it would be, I think it would be premature to assume that what the uses will be there.
City Attorney?
Yes, thank you. And Mr. Mayor, just to clarify also, the proposed ordinance has a definition of city park. And so if you go to page two of that ordinance, it defines what would be authorized under the ordinance, and then so only those four would be excluded. So you wouldn't have to worry. It's a pretty bright line. And then you could determine later yourselves whether to amend that.
Councilmember Curtis?
So the default would be alcohol would be allowed, and then we would specifically have to put a new park in the disallowed if we chose that.
Correct. If the park is defined as city park in the rec and open space plan, or in the comp plan or city ordinance, correct.
Yeah, that works for me.
Councilmember Hervin?
Councilmember Smith already hit on most of my points, as he does so often. But I do think it's premature to decide what we want to do with this property, because I don't think we fully utilize it, and I don't think we have a good idea of how it will be used by the public. So I think it'd be wise for us to wait on deciding we're excluding City Hall Park until we have more of a history with use, and until maybe it's built out and we have a better idea for the feel of the park.
Yeah, I think it's important we get this stuff in before the public hearing, because you never know whether something is going to change something down the road. So it's good that we get some of this stuff out. Captain Mayor?
I'm kind of torn here. I'm inclined to agree with Chief Sevther and Jennifer Gordon of Public Works, that we really don't need alcohol in our parks, and it'll just complicate law enforcement. But at the same time, the codes that we have now are so ambiguous and confusing that somehow it needs to be cleaned up. And if you vote no on this proposal, this ordinance, then we're not cleaning up all those other ambiguities in the other ordinances. So I don't know where we could go if we didn't go to the alcohol in the parks. Is there an alternative to clean up the language, or do we not need to clean up the language because it refers to alcohol in the parks? We don't have it.
City Manager?
Yeah, so no matter what, we recommend cleaning up the language. So you could vote no on tonight's ordinance, and then we'd like some direction to come back with cleanup language that is along the lines of what you desire.
Okay, and this applies to city parks, not county or state parks?
Actually, it could be considered both, because the city parks is through the criminal code, whereas the other parks are through the zoning code. So we do have state parks and county parks that are part of this through the zoning
But isn't it any land that is declared a park zone?
Yeah, there's two points. One is any land that's designated a parks zone, and the second is any city park. So the criminal code discusses the city park aspect, whereas the parks zone is discussed in the zoning code.
Any other questions?
All city parks are in park zones, but all park zones are not city parks.
That's correct. That's mostly true, except the town green is in the downtown business zone, but it's a park. So there you go.
Is it going to be a city park?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions before we open the public hearing? Okay. Hearing, no further questions. I will declare a public hearing, receive public testimony regarding ordinance number 16-0417, the consumption, sale, possession, and service of alcohol beverages in city parks, and the parks zones to be open. Clerk please to call the first person.
There's no one signed up.
Anybody wishing to be heard? Anybody wishing to be heard on ordinance number 16-0417, consumption, sale, possession, and service of alcoholic beverages in city parks or parks zones? Anybody wishing to be heard? Hearing and seeing nobody come forward, I declare the public hearing closed. All right. So any further questions for Mr. Hampson?
I guess I am still confused on the city property here, where the City Hall is being a park. So when I look at the map, I don't see that this is zoned as park.
No, this is zoned as a public semi-public. And through the definition of the city park, it would be included in the definition of a city park?
Can you help me find that language where I can?
I actually, I think I'm not correct. Because it's not identified as a city park through the pros plan, it isn't a city park.
That is correct. So it would have to be either in the city park recreation open space plan section of your comp plan, so that's one spot, or it'd have to be in any other city ordinance which designates city parks. So until that happens, there is no real city park.
Okay.
Right. Very confusing.
Councilmember Sperry?
So I feel like we're confusing people, because it's not that there's going to be alcohol allowed in the parks, it's that people can apply for special use permits in association with like a special event. with like a special event, that kind of thing. So is, I mean, am I understanding or perceiving this correctly?
You are, right. And part of that process would involve the state liquor control and cannabis board approval and requirements. And so, it wouldn't be, this isn't any kind of ordinance that would just allow people to be walking through the city park intoxicated or drinking, it's just through special events and as approved by the city manager.
So no booze trucks like food trucks, right?
That could be a possibility, if it's part of a special event, that they're setting up food trucks and beer gardens and booze trucks.
I meant booze truck, you know, moves from park to park.
Oh, no. I just wanted to point out, just wanted to point out, if you wanted to make any amendments to the proposed ordinance, you'd have to do it at this time.
The special event is a short-term thing, for two, three days, special event. What about a business that might locate in a park as a concession kind of a business that wants to sell beer and wine?
The second part of the ordinance is not only through a special event, but an approved use. And so that, your situation be approved use, and so that would be a zoning approval for that use, and that would allow them to serve alcohol continuously until they stopped that use.
So how would that work with the town hall, the town green? Is that a special use for that one particular?
Right. If you had a tenant that came in and went, sorry, I spoke over you.
No, that's okay.
If you had a tenant that came into the town green who wanted to serve alcohol, we'd go through the zoning regulations, and if it was a permitted use, they would establish their, they'll be legal to sell alcohol through that, that process.
Is that an issue though, since the town green is downtown commercial and not a park zone? Does that change things?
No, it actually helps things.
So that's another way around getting into a park?
So, it helps the establishment of a restaurant or something like that that wants to be in the town green space.
Whereas if they wanted to go to Logan Park or Redmond Park, that's not an approved use in those parks.
Right. Another example is St. Edward State Park. If a restaurant wanted to locate in the seminary building, this zoning change allows for that to happen as an established use with appropriate land use approvals.
All right, any further questions? Thank you. Now, we need a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-0417, consumption, sale, possession, and service of alcoholic beverages in city parks and park zones. Is there a motion? It's moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded.
Can I speak to the motion?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, first of all, thank you so much, Brian, for all this hard work and the staff on this, because obviously, it was very confusing, it was very outdated. When I was reading the council packet for the first time, and it was referencing the Kenmore fairgrounds, I thought, I'm not sure that we ever have had one of those. So it just showed that it really wasn't a workable ordinance, the way it was written. And the way I look at it is, this is sort of version 2.0, and, you know, if we need to come back in a half a year or a year, if we find something's not working, or we need to make adjustments, we need to make adjustments. So I believe that this, I'm in favor of it, because I believe it is much better than what we had, it's going to be much easier for the staff to administer, and it's also going to be clearer for the public when they're looking at what they want to do in terms of a special event. So, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, we have a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-0417. There's no further questions, comments, or discussion. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Van Ness?
No.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes. Motion carries six, one. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing to receive public testimony regarding proposed changes to the public agency utility exemption, PAUE, to the city's critical area ordinance, regulations in KMC 18-55. Ms. Bent? Ms. Anderson?
Good evening, council. So tonight is the opportunity for a public hearing on proposed minor changes to the public agency and utility exception criteria, which contained in the city zoning code and critical area regulation chapter. So, we are not asking for council, a council decision tonight. We are simply looking for council direction, and if there are no substantive comments or changes, council could direct staff to bring forward an amendment, an ordinance that would adopt amendments. And the soonest that we would do that would be March 14th. We have advertised this public hearing, we have issued a non-project SEPA determination, and we've, so we've followed all the correct procedures that are required when considering amendments to development regulations. I'd like to ask Lori just to kind of step through what the proposal involves before you open the public hearing. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. So the PAUE, the public agency and utility exception to the critical area rules, has been in place since at least 2006 in Kenmore, and that was the time when the city adopted its own regulations. The code section was written to allow public agencies and utilities to apply for an exception if strictly following the rules prohibited a proposed public project or service extension. The Washington State Department of Commerce includes the PAUE in their sample code provisions for drafting a critical areas ordinance. The Department of Ecology webpage also references that model ordinance. Most surrounding jurisdictions have a similar exception, including Redmond, Woodinville, Samamish, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, and Seattle, and Kirkland also has such a provision, although theirs applies only to utilities and trails. So in 2009, following a challenge to the language in Kenmore's exception, the city attorney determined that the exception as written could only be applied to utility activities, such as the extension of a utility line. This was not the intent of the original code section, and clarifying language is being recommended. So staff has revised the language to clearly explain the intent of the code provision and to add new criteria about minimizing impact and mitigating impacts. The PAUE does not apply in areas covered by the Shoreline Master Program, and that is specifically written in the amendments. As you know, the Shoreline Master Program includes areas within 200 feet of Lake Washington, the Samamish River, and Swamp Creek, as well as their associated wetlands. The new criteria, as I mentioned, include that the development proposal benefits the public, that the development proposal minimizes impacts to the critical area or buffer to the maximum extent practical, and that the development proposal mitigates impacts to the critical area functions and values to the maximum extent practical. As Debbie mentioned, SEPA review was required for these proposed amendments, as with all development regulations. The comment period ended today, and I wanted to point out that the city had received six comments about this, most focused on the potential use of the PAUE for the possible St. Edward State Park ball fields. I did want to point out that there was a letter from an attorney in one of the emails that council did receive, that letter, although dated today, was unsigned, it was actually a copy of a letter submitted in 2009, when the initial discussion about the PAUE provision was discussed. So with that, I'll answer questions.
Councilmember Herbig?
So am I reading correctly that the city wanted to use the PAUE under, under the ordinance you have here, that it would be the city manager who would decide whether the city could get the exemption?
It would be the Development Services Department that would make the decision about whether the criteria were satisfied.
Okay. Is that how it's generally done in other municipalities?
Yes.
Okay. And can you walk me through a little bit what, if we were to use the exemption, what sort of, what the mitigation looks like, or what is required for mitigation if we, if we use the exemption?
Yeah, I don't think I can answer that question specifically, because it would depend on what the critical area was, whether it was in the actual critical area or the buffer. The goal, as with all the critical area rules, is, is to look at minimizing impact, and if there is an impact, trying to mitigate for it. So to compensate using best available science, or looking at the functions and values of the feature. So, it's an analysis, it's not that it's an exception and you just get to do whatever you want, no matter what the criteria spell out, that you would have to look at minimization and mitigation, and that it would be a project that would benefit the public. That's a new criteria that we added.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
So, I know this is intended to clarify things, but I'm still confused. So the first sentence, the A section, so 18.55.160A.
Sure.
So whenever there's an or statement, there are, there's one thing on each side of the or that's equally important. So I can't figure out if the or is saying on one side is public agency, on the other side is private, or, the other way of interpreting it, a development by a public agency is on one side of the or, and on the other side of the or, a private entity delivering water, sewer, stormwater, electrical, or gas services.
It's, it's public agency on one side, and on the other side is utility. And, and the reason that the, all of these comments about a private entity delivering water, sewer, stormwater, electrical, or gas service, the reason that that was expanded was because under current definition of utility, as pointed out by the city attorney, you could include telecommunications, for example, in that, and, and really, the intent was to address traditional utilities, water lines, sewer lines, stormwater, et cetera. So we didn't want to broaden it to just use the term utility that might bring in a cell tower or something like that. And that's why this specific language was put in here and thereby defining what a private utility is.
So, if everybody else is really clear with this, and every citizen would be able to understand it, then I think it's fine to leave the wording as it is. If it could be made more clear what's on the side of the or, I would feel better about that. So I'm not against the concept, I think it could just be more clear. It's a really complex sentence, and you have to like, cut away pieces to say, what is this, the root structure? I mean, this is back ninth grade English grammar, trying to understand this sentence.
I mean, as we go through rewriting this code, which we've done a lot of recently, when different sections, I really appreciate Councilmember Curtis's comments, because some of this stuff, you can read it five times and still not understand it. And I know that we've worked and made some sections of the code very easy to understand, and I hope that we continue with this, because there are those of us that don't do this every day, that would like to read it once and understand it, so.
That's always the intent when we make code amendments, is to clarify the language so it's easy to understand by those who might be applying for something, or those who are interpreting the code, on both sides of the table.
So I know one of the questions that I had was, if it is deemed appropriate to allow mitigation, if you're disturbing some area, that it's a three to one ratio?
It depends on the, on the class of the wetland, or the critical, or the buffer or critical area that you, that there are potential impacts to. So the higher the classification, the higher the mitigation ratio.
So then a class one or class two wetland, you would be at three to one. You'd have to restore three times as much as you disturbed.
The way the language is written is that it mitigates impacts to the critical area functions and values to the maximum extent practical. So I do want to point that out, and then on the second page of the amendments, there's an amended definition for practical alternative that talks about what makes something practical, talks about effectiveness, engineering feasibility, costs, safety, existing technology, and logistics, in light of the overall project needs, purposes, and objectives. So this, although there are criteria that you have to satisfy, there, this is an exception to the critical area rules. So it may be that the exact mitigation ratio, that would certainly be the goal, but it would have to be practical.
Councilmember Curtis?
To me, that seems a little squishy, practical. So sometimes, I understand it's necessary to do things in what ends. And, but if we have rules that say we will replace that or mitigate it at a certain level, somehow this seems like it's letting us off the hook too easy, us or the private entities. I guess I am having a hard time to understand. So if you can, you have a project here and you can mitigate over here, I can't understand why there would ever need to be an exception that says we can't do three to one ratio or whatever our laws say. So that's the part, I can't figure out why you'd need the exception.
Yeah. I would say that actually, the existing language that's used for utilities doesn't have any of these criteria about minimizing impact or mitigating. So in fact, this is strengthening the language for utilities, at least, if you assume that that's all that's covered by the current code language. Certainly, if the council felt that achieving the required mitigation ratios for wetlands, for example, was something that you wanted to make sure happened, that language could be added here. You know, that the development should mitigate impacts and satisfy existing mitigation ratios, for example.
But, but that's dealing with utilities, and I understand the utility side. We're talking about a different use here.
No, I know that.
And so I think that we should have some, something that says a definite amount, and not necessarily so squishy. I got Deputy Mayor Van Ness and then Councilmember Herbig.
Yeah, I'm still having trouble with maximum extent practical. Who determines what's practical, what's impractical?
It, it would be the Development Services Director. It says city manager review, but as you recall from code amendments, city manager. It can either be city manager or his.
And what criteria do they use to make that determination?
Practical, it's the definition. If you look at the second page of the proposed amendments, practical alternative is actually defined.
Okay.
So it means an alternative that is available and capable of being carried out after taking into consideration effectiveness, engineering feasibility, cost, safety, existing technology, and logistics, in light of overall project needs, purposes, and objectives, and has less impacts to critical areas.
So typically, when you get to the, a project level application, you would have a report that would outline what critical areas were on the site, what the impacts were, and what the proposed mitigation would be, and how the criteria in the code are addressed. So there, it's, the decision then has the information in hand to be able to make that decision.
So can I give an example? You might have a situation where, in the immediate vicinity, you don't have an opportunity to create a new wetland, because maybe there's already a bunch of wetlands, but you may have the opportunity to enhance a lot of wetlands. And so that, this code gives us the flexibility to do enhancement of a greater area versus trying to create wetlands where we can't practically do it. Does that make sense, Lori, Debbie?
That could certainly be, yes.
One scenario.
That could be a scenario. That could be a scenario.
Councilmember Herbig?
I mean, it seems like our current ordinance allows us to make exceptions for things that are necessary for utilities, for things that, you know, we absolutely need to survive. I'm not, I can't, I'm not 100% comfortable with us expanding this to luxuries. You know, I can see the need for us to make exceptions for necessities, but I'm just not 100% comfortable with us doing this for things that aren't essential to, to life, frankly.
I, I might point out that public agencies, I think that the issue that's been raised by the public has to do with the ballfields at St. Edward's, but public agencies do a lot of other things. This would apply to potentially a new road, a new sidewalk. It could be any, any proposal brought forward by a public agency, and those things are not utilities, but there is no exception for them without some type of a public agency, or, which I'm sure is why Commerce has it in its model ordinance, that there will be potential public projects that to, for a variety of reasons, would need to impact these critical areas, and there might be a need for an exception. And the other kinds of exceptions, reasonable use exception, for example, really applies to private property, and the ability to do something with your property. The criteria for something like that are not applicable easily to a public project, which is why, when this city attorney interpretation in 2009 came up, the, dealing with potential amendments to the PAUE went immediately onto the list of needed code amendments to address that. So I passed that along.
No, no, and that's, and that's a really good point. I appreciate the need for us to be able to do this for things like sidewalks. I mean, you're totally, you know, that's, that's totally correct. I guess I'm just not 100% sold on doing this for things that are, things that are really nice to have, that we'd like to have, but that aren't complete, that aren't necessary. So thank you.
Councilmember Curtis?
I think that the thing that's missing for me to really understand and interpret this, is what are our rules on the mitigation for doing something in a wetland? So I know we have extra laws somewhere that addresses that, and I guess if they were like, present, so I could look at those and compare them and think about it, and in the same thought, because otherwise, we're talking about it, but we really don't have it in front of us. So I think that would help me to understand, because I'm sort of in favor of it, but I don't feel like I have quite enough information.
Okay.
Councilmember Sperry?
Thank you. So say that, you know, we need to build a sidewalk, and there's a, you know, impact, and so this PAUE exemption is, is being utilized. So what if there were people that didn't want that to happen? What, what would be the appeal process? Would it be like the projects, you know, the normal comment period?
Right. So a PAUE is a land-use action. So there is an application, and then there is a decision. Right now, it's an administrative decision. So there are public notice requirements that go along with the application, there are public notice requirements that go along with the decision, and then there is an administrative appeal process following that decision. Following the conclusion of an administrative appeal, there's also the opportunity for a, an appeal to court as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Yeah, I have a question, Lori. In, on the very first page of this, you note that Redmond, Woodinville, Samamish, Bothell, Lake Forest Park, and Seattle have similar exceptions. Is there any substantive difference between what we're doing and what they have in their ordinances?
I think they all are different. I think all of them are founded basically in the Commerce language. I think not all of them include the language about minimizing impact and then mitigating for impact. I think there was maybe only one, or possibly two, that, that sort of broadened the criteria. I didn't see one that specifically called out that it had to be a public, it was beneficial to the public. So I think that this, as written, is probably more restrictive than in other communities, except those, for example, like Kirkland, who really do restrict it just to trails and utilities.
Thank you.
So for example, compared to the Samamish one, would you say ours is more restrictive?
I would. Although I will say, I don't remember, I, I took bits and pieces, I found the more restrictive bits and pieces from the different ordinances, so I don't.
Yeah, I remember reading the Samamish one, and my recollection is that our proposed changes here are still more restrictive than Samamish's.
All right, any other questions, comments? Mrs. Bent? Oh, Councilmember Sperry?
Yes, thank you. Well, one comment is, maybe under the amended definition, under the practical alternatives or something, examples are always good. You know, just like when you said about, you know, examples of roads and sidewalks. If there's a way to, to somehow incorporate, I mean, I know it's always tricky, because you don't want to say it's, you know, only limited to these, but that might help people when they're reading this, to have some concrete picture of what this might look like.
Mrs. Anderson, Mrs. Bent, do you have what you need?
No, because this is a public hearing right now, so.
I know that, I am getting ready to call that, I just wanted to know whether you were.
I, what I've heard is that there is interest in clarifying that the section, the first sentence of the Section A, I've heard interest in providing the current regulations regarding mitigation, and I've heard if we could provide some possible examples of what a practical alternative would be. So based on what council's requested, we could certainly bring those forward to you at a later date, and then we also would be looking after the public hearing on your direction, whether you're ready to bring forward an ordinance.
Right. All right. So I will declare the public hearing to receive public testimony regarding proposed changes to the public agency utility exemption, the PAUE, to the city's critical area regulations in KMC 18.55. Clerk, please call first person.
Ann Anderson?
Hi, my name is Ann Anderson, 16304, 81st Place, Northeast in Kenmore. So the PAUE allows city to fill in wetlands where city deems necessary for recreation, as Lori Anderson just stated, ballparks in St. Edward's State Park. Okay, so we see what's going on, so, so you're, I, we feel that your decisions have already been made. I appreciate this public hearing, but you only gave us two weeks for public comment, and a lot of us are in the dark. So why not do an EIS, an environmental impact statement? Because your amendment to the code will give you the option, if you get to use it over and over again, of harming our wetlands and cutting down trees. It's so wrong. Why don't you just stick with supporting our environmental laws and letting our critical areas stay protected? Please do not switch around mitigation in one area to get some activity, activity in another. It harms ecosystems. I would like to please request the following: Show us the evidence, and who the experts are that assessed this PAUE. Provide their qualifications. I don't feel confident, you know, with, you know, in their qualifications, that show, I feel like it's a conflict of interest for us to do our own homework, instead of getting outside agencies, that I want to see who will be proving to us, showing us evidence that this will not cause a significant adverse environmental impact. I think the evidence shows your exceptions have caused harm to the environment, such as Log Boom Park, for the last PAUE. Give us more time, you have not provided enough time before a hearing to allow the community to understand the impacts of this proposed change. And thirdly, we don't think our city should ever be getting around our environmental laws, especially for recreation. As Councilman Herbig said, it's not even a necessity, it's for recreation. Your exceptions should not be part of your policies. I object to them being pushed forward. You should have a policy of EISs for all requests for variances. And number four, we need your strict adherence to protection of our environment for future generations, quality of life, and protecting our air, water, and shorelines. Please, we need you to protect us. Please protect us from unnecessary flooding by developing on wetlands, and on another note, from clearcutting and developing on landslide and erosion hazard areas. Thank you.
Elizabeth Mooney?
Mayor Baker, is there a, a time limit on, at a hearing? Because my memory is that there is no time limit.
I need to ask the clerk, I think there is, but I need clarification.
There is. It's normally been five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think I can do it within five. I have a letter to read that, are we beginning? Okay, thank you. Elizabeth Mooney, 5934, Northeast 201st Street, Kenmore. I did already send a letter to Mr. Hampson. I think it's an incredibly outrageous short amount of time for something this significant, and I think it is absolutely inaccurate that this amendment would not cause a significant adverse environmental impact. It obviously would. He's no scientist. They're not even allowing this to go to a SEPA, it's this, just pass it on through. Very few people in the public know about it. And as far as mitigation goes, you can harm a wetland in St. Edward Park, and then find the laws to, to make that happy for some part of the public, I don't know which part of the public, the ones who want to skateboard park up there, who knows? That's completely nebulous. You're breaking your own critical areas ordinances to adopt this. I don't even know who, who started it, and why. If you're asking questions, I'm questioning, is that the staff that brought this forward? If so, Mr. Hampson, and the Development Services, and our former city manager, also took care of the Lake Point project, and that was through deferred maintenance. That was an environmental impact, and that was bending the laws, and I can prove that to you if you want to know later, but the wetland that was there is no longer there, it's covered up with our anchors for our 520 bridge. So if you wreck a wetland up at St. Edward, or wherever, you can probably also bend the law to mitigate in some bank that might be at some other river. I don't want that in my city. I want you guys taking care, and you women, taking care of our wetlands, taking care of the birds that need the wetland, the frogs that need the wetland, wherever it is in that community. Not letting somebody else decide which public you're going to protect, you're going to have arguments among the people. If one set of people wants ballfields, and the other people want the trees, who are you going to choose between? Who's better? You have the laws, don't change them, and please stop paying our staff tons of money to make more amendments, that we then have to come in and spend our evening fighting. I have got a lot more things to do, and I really would prefer not to have been here. So way back in 2008 or '09, oh, and by the way, yes, you did use a PAUE in Log Boom Park, I don't agree with you, Lori. It was used at Log Boom Park, I talked to Debbie Bent about it, I went as a SEPA appeal on that one. I spent my money trying to protect the stream, which they said was not there, because Bill Evans, our former Parks person, is the one who started this exception. It was at the front of a manila folder that said, "We can use the PAUE to get around these protections of the wetlands." It's crooked, it's wrong, and I expect a lot more from you, and I trust you, I do not trust whatever system is coming up right now. And I want to, I want to kick back and enjoy. So I want to thank also our city manager for talking to me about this, I understand that there is a possibility for mitigation. I also want to thank Councilmember Smith for talking to me, I want to get along with everybody, but I think this is a bad idea. So Todd Bergman, in 2008 or '09, I'm sorry, I don't remember, and I know that ballfields are great, sports fields are great, but there would right now probably be a ballfield on top of a wetland at Wallace Swamp Creek Park, let alone whether or not you like ballfields or whatever. My point is that I don't think that would have been good, even if you were just a downstream person that didn't want to get flooded. It would have been a bad idea there. I'm happy to help you all find a place for ballfields, or whatever the purpose is behind this. I don't know why Mr. Hampson had this come forward in February 8th. The only reason I can imagine is that it has something to do with Mr. Daniels wanting the Seminary building, and that we can piggyback on. And I heard about it first, not through you, but through the Parks Commissioner, Mr. Hankinson. So it just seems like the city's trying to piggyback on to Mr. Daniels' outrageous project, where he's no steward of the environment, and yet, I'm sure he'll be very happy to have exceptions, and I don't approve of that. So please keep our critical areas ordinances intact, don't make exceptions, that's what good parents do. And you are the parents of our wetlands, and our streams, and our riparian zones. Log Boom Park has creos, okay, I don't know how many seconds I have left, but can I have one more minute to read this to you, please? Okay. So this is the letter that came from Claudia Newman to our city way back in 2008. I'm going to change it, because I asked permission from Todd Bergman and Claudia Newman, who was the lawyer representing Save Wallace Swamp Creek Park, if I could utilize this, and they gave permission. So even though, I haven't even had time to bring this up to our board at PERC, but basically, it's saying, "I'm writing to you again on behalf to provide relevant input to your discussion this evening about the public agency utility exception, intent and application. Review the agenda bill summary for tonight's meeting, and see that city staff has proposed some options for amending the PAUE." I've got some comments. The question presented by staff is whether City of Kenmore PA language should be amended so that it applies to a broad range of public development proposals that would include projects such as youth sports fields. At the outset, we hope you agree it's bad policy for the city to adopt a general exception to critical areas protection requirements for a broad range of its own development projects. Setting aside the illegality of such action under the Growth Management Act, the city should not require private developers to protect the public interest while not holding themselves to the same standard.
Thank you, Mrs. Mooney.
There's no one else signed up?
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Anybody else being wishing to be heard on the changes, proposed changes to the public agency utility exemption to the city's critical area ordinance in KMC 18-55? Anybody else wishing to be heard? Hearing or seeing nobody coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed. Any further comments or discussion? Mrs. Bent?
So now you've closed the public hearing, and you've heard comments, what is the council's direction on bringing forward an ordinance based on the current staff recommendation?
Well, we had some suggestions, right? Some concerns?
You requested some additional information, which we can certainly bring forward. The question is, are you, would you like us to also prepare an ordinance at this time?
But, I mean, it seems like there's consensus there, but I certainly want to see in that ordinance, some that we've talked about here, with some, some definite ratios, and, and some of the squishy language, and a little bit more certain with what's going on.
So I agree, I think what we'd, what I'd like to see anyway, is that you add the things we've discussed before you go write an ordinance, and then we'll, I would say one more discussion, and then we'll make that decision if we're ready to move the next step.
Okay.
Is that a? Is that a general agreement then to take these incorporations and incorporate what we've talked about here and come back and...
So you've asked for information, so are you also looking then for sort of revised language as an option that would maybe address some of those changes then?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something more concrete in there, certainly about the ratios and some of the other squishy language, so at least, yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Imagine Kenmore, potential project list and discussion and direction. Mrs. Overlyce. Mrs. Bent. Mr. Carlin. Mr. Gregg, Mrs. Gregory. Ms. Harris. I mean, my goodness. We got them all up here.
Thank you. So you can see that the Imagine Kenmore project has involved a lot of staff. Across all departments have been involved in this. So the purpose of the, tonight's agenda, is to present three potential bond measure package alternatives. We're not asking for a decision this evening. We're just going to present the proposal. These packages were created based on the feedback we've received from the community and a variety of different ways that we've obtained public feedback. And at previous meetings, we've kind of gone over the results of that feedback. So based on the feedback we received, we worked hard to come up with possible packages that would reflect that community input. And that's what we're intending to present this evening. So I'm fudging for time while Chris is, well, we're ready. So I think we're ready.
I think we're going to introduce Allegra Calder, too.
And so also with consulting, we have Allegra Calder. There she is waving in the audience. So if there are any specific questions that come, we can also draw Allegra into the conversation as well. So moving right along, in your packet, the first package we'd like to briefly describe in the Park and Recreation Package. And this reflects a range of projects that would connect or improve water access, would improve trail access, and also improve athletic fields. So the Log Boom Park Water Access, that is based on the concept that was presented to you in December by Coast and Harbor. So that's improvements at Log Boom, such as a beach expansion, out overlooks to improve water access, opportunities to launch hand carry watercraft. The Tolt Trail Phase Two, that is the connection between 73rd and 80th, and that would be along the city of Seattle's property there that they own for their water lines. The Rhode Dendrum Park Boardwalk, that would provide a connection from the interior of the park, where the park is currently developed, and a boardwalk that would get you down to the water by the access road off of Wanita Drive. Squire's Landing Park, that is based on the concept that was presented to you again back in December by Coast and Harbor. That involves about 11 acres of the Squire's Landing Park, and it again would improve waterfront access. It would provide opportunities for improving recreation, specifically for hand carry watercraft. So trails, opportunity, location for a proposed boat house, restoration, parking lot, restroom, those kind of things. The St. Edward Athletic Fields, that would be renovation of the existing athletic field, about 3.5 acres at St. Edward State Park, for ball fields with an overlay, soccer field, and cricket pitch. So those are the projects in the Parks and Recreation Package, and those projects would total about $16 million. Next?
Good evening. I'm going to go through the slide on, really you could call it a transportation package to make it short, but it's sidewalk, bicycle, and trail. And the total package I'll describe has an estimate of $18.7 million. I'm going to go off topic slightly and talk about my, these projects listed are 0% design projects, so they're very high level cost estimates. We were conservative. And when we estimate costs for projects like these, we pretty much try to take an estimate of what construction might cost, and then we just put a percentage on them per design. So these are very high level cost estimates with 0% design, which are never precise. So the first project on the list is 61st Avenue Sidewalk Replacement. This is the one project on the list where we're replacing something that we already have. So this is 61st Avenue north of 190th Street up to about 200th. And the reason it's not all the way to the county line is there is sidewalk on the east side of 61st, 200th North, that's in pretty decent shape, and it didn't look like it needed to be replaced. And this is on both sides, 190th to 200th. The 68th Sidewalk Project is design, right-of-way acquisition, and construction from 182nd Street all the way up to the county line, and it would be on one side of the street only. There is a piece of sidewalk we'll be building in a little over a year up by Kenmore Junior High that was a Safe Routes to School grant. So we did not include that area in our cost estimate. So this is funding in addition to what we already have planned and funded. Wanita Drive Grant Match. We are proposing $5 million to have, to put towards grant applications for Wanita. Of all the sidewalk projects we've talked about so far on this list, this is the one we believe that would be competitive for grants. So we're proposing a chunk of money to put towards our applications. Typically, on grant applications, the more money you put in for match, the better you score. So I think having those resources to apply for grants would be a good idea. And then the last project is the same that Debbie mentioned in the Parks and Recreation Package, which is the Tolt Trail Phase Two from 73rd to 80th. And I think it's a good fit in the transportation package because it would provide a needed pedestrian connection between 73rd and 80th. And again, as I mentioned, the high level cost estimate for this package would be about
Good evening. I'm going to present to you the Combo Package, otherwise known as Walkways and Waterways, which I believe was brought forward by a council member, and includes some of the best of both the first two options. It's a well-balanced package with two transportation packages that total about $9.9 million and three park projects totaling $9 million that enhance the community's access to the waterfront. So this is a third option to consider with a cost similar to the sidewalk, bicycle, and trail, $18, $19 million target that we were shooting for. So this is more of a compromise. So these are our three options for your consideration and deliberation.
So what are the next steps? So tonight, as Debbie mentioned, we're presenting the three potential options and asking for you guys, for council to review and come forward on March 4th with a potential, or provide guidance on March 14th for a preferred potential bond package. Prior to the council meeting on March 14th, we're inviting the community to an open house to ask staff questions about the potential packages, and that way we can have a dialogue with the public as well. So, and then after that, once council brings forward a potential package, we're going to go out first to conduct a statistically valid survey and then ask council, bring out forward in April and May, request that council makes a decision on, one, whether to put an item on the fall ballot, and if so, which project package would that be?
So we're happy to answer questions tonight, or give you the opportunity to think about it and ask questions on the 14th. So we're really here as needed.
Questions? Councilmember Januski?
I'm personally a fan of the Walkways and Waterways. I know we've been told not to put competing things on the ballot, but this one puts kind of the best of both into one package. Personally, I think that 68th and Wanita sidewalks are my top items if we were going to consider putting anything on the ballot. So I like the Walkways and Waterways. Tolt Trail, I like the idea, but that's a really expensive path, and I don't know how, that would be very complex to try and get to work through a wetland. Let's see. One other question I have is, how did we decide what the right level to ask people for? You know, we ended up, it was kind of around $14 a month, but how do we figure out? Should it be $10 a month, $20 a month? Or is the wrong audience here?
It's just what sort of felt right without asking, making too much of a package too expensive for our average homeowner, like being able to incorporate enough projects to make it significant enough. And I believe the city manager would like to comment on that, too.
Yeah, we asked EMC Research that question, I believe, last week, and they're finding that obviously as cost goes up, support falls off. And once you get into the $22, or I'm sorry, the $22 million range, and that impacts costs to households, the support drops off quite a bit. I believe $22 million is around $180 a year for the average household. So that's kind of pushing a little bit. In our survey that we did last December, we did a $180 a year package proposal, if you might remember, for both parks and sidewalks. And I believe, if I remember right, both did get in the 60% range, so even at $180 a year. But we are proposing to go something less, and doing so would improve support.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
I too am a fan more of the third option, the Walkways and Waterways. And one of the ways I get there is because I don't think it would be a good idea to have two different ballot measures. And so the other two options give us, we either go with one or the other, or else both. And I don't think it would be right to do two. And when you look at then and you say, okay, well, which one makes the most sense? Well, I think it's the second one then, if you're just going to go with one and it has to do with the safety issues. And so especially when we had a number of citizens talk about, you know, over the last year and a half, about how they would be willing to step up and pay for those improvements. So it seems to me it breaks down into being a combination measure by the fact I wouldn't want to have two competing against each other, and I think it does take what is clearly the most important corridor, other than 522, and tries to make it safe.
Councilmember Herbig?
So I have some specific questions on the transportation proposals. So I saw when we were talking, especially about 68th, there was an assumption that all the existing sidewalks in the study area would be replaced. Why would we be making that assumption? I ask because, you know, even though we were using the old King County Road standards, we required those little segments that we have to be built when development occurred. And by doing so, we increased the cost of the housing and the development that went in, with the idea of being that long-term, those sidewalks, those little pieces would then connect to the larger network. It seems like a bit of a waste to then go in and tear up what are, you know, perfectly fine sidewalks. They may not be up to our current, you know, what our current road standards would require, but it seems like a bit of a waste to me. Can you walk me through that a little bit?
Yes, and it's a great question. When our FER and PIERs, the team that helped us do the cost estimating, they asked me for guidance, and I said, for the sake of being conservative, assume that all sidewalk would be replaced. If we can save sidewalk, we will. Part of our challenge will be, well, and I didn't mention, we also want to add bike lanes in these areas. Our updated transportation element calls for buffered bike lanes in some areas, five-foot bike lanes in others. So we'll keep sidewalk if we can, but we also want to move the sidewalk out to get the bike lane in. So for me, including the cost of new sidewalk was being conservative because there is a chance it'll have to be replaced, because the sidewalk pouring itself is the cheap part. It's all the stormwater and the right-of-way and the walls that go into these projects. So we could have to rip something up to put a new stormwater system in. So we'll save them if we can, but we wanted to be conservative and assume that they'd come out.
Okay, and that brings me to my next question. Actually, on 61st, you know, what we're focusing on there mainly is tearing out the old sidewalk, putting in new sidewalk, and dealing with the tree situation so we don't have another sidewalk problem there in 15 years. When you did the cost estimation on 61st, were you doing the same linear foot estimation that you would have done on 68th, where there isn't already the, underneath the stormwater infrastructure and all that? Or were you doing a different cost estimation on 61st?
If we replace sidewalks, we assumed, for the sake of cost estimating only, that trees would come out and be replaced, and sidewalk would get ripped out and replaced. So it would be a complete redo back of curb. We did not assume new, complete new stormwater system is my recollection.
Is that what we're assuming, though, on like 68th, where we are going to be covering ditches and...
Yes, 68th has no, is, it's open stormwater system and...
Okay. Can I help jump in on that item? So Chris did a good job on 61st, coming up with kind of a worst case, with kind of a more expensive scenario. That section of 61st is a really beautiful section. It's the one part of Kenmore that looks like New England. Those trees are incredible, and our goal would be to save those trees and work around them. But the reason Chris has the more worst-case scenario in there is because we haven't surveyed the road properly to know if we can save those trees. We also don't know the health of the trees and things like that. So she's giving you a worst-case scenario, but I think most, if not all, you, all of you will agree with me that, you know, saving the trees would need to be a priority.
I agree. Is there a, on 61st still, was there any thought of looking at, and I know you're going for the most conservative options so that we don't run over on price, but was there any thought about more spot repairs or doing kind of individual repairs along the existing sidewalks rather than doing a full tear-out and rebuild?
So how I view what would happen on 61st, we would do an alternatives analysis. There may, there's a really wide shoulder. There may be the option of taking out some of the parking and putting a bike walkway on the inside of that curb. So I think there's maybe different ideas of things we could do, and it certainly could be, maybe some of the trees have to be replaced because they're so intrusive into the sidewalk. We just have no design. So to me, it's all, I think it wouldn't be a pick an option and go for it. I think it would be come up with a couple ideas and look at cost and...
So we wouldn't be tying our hands with this once we went forward? We would have a general project list, and we'd still be deciding how to spend that money to best achieve the projects?
And I would add for 61st that I don't see that as a grant competitive project. I think if we want to do anything to 61st, we'll be doing it on our own.
Now, on 68th, and actually on Wanita, where we're talking about building sidewalk down one side of a fairly busy street, is there any thought about, or is this included? Maybe I missed it, adding additional crossings on those streets so that folks that live on the wrong side of the street can access the pedestrian facility?
Mm-hmm. To me, it's reevaluating the whole corridor and adding new crossings as well.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Curtis and Councilmember Sari?
Can you turn the slide presentation back to the mixed one, the combo? So I'm not going to be here for the March 14th...
going to be here for the March fourteenth meeting. I will be in Alaska hoping to see northern lights. So, I will give my comments now that you'll have to hold in your mind till then. So, initially, I was thinking it's not good to mix the two ideas, but as I looked at this, walkways and waterways, I really like it. So, one thing is the sidewalk, well, when you look at the survey we finished recently, people are definitely in favor of sidewalks and safety. And they, over the years, they're definitely in favor of water things. They weren't so happy with parks, per se, but getting to the water was really a priority for people. So, there's two things. So, the top two talk about the safety, and it's like the spine. So, we've been working the last twelve years on the east-west corridor through the middle of our city. So, these, sixty-eighth and Wanita Drive, pretty much take care of the north-south, main, central corridor. So, I think it's a strong statement that we care about safety. We've been working on safety on five-twenty-two, and now we're going to do it for these two pieces, which are really one long road with two names. And then the three water projects, when you look at, you know, Log Boom on the West, and then Rhoda Denter, and then Squire's Landing, and then eventually Lake Point, we'll have four really strong water-oriented projects close together. So, I think it would be just a really strong set of projects that the citizens will like and support. So, I'm in favor of this one.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to go back a ways. So, my question is on the Sixty-Eighth Avenue sidewalk proposal. I remember years and years ago, the study that we had, that was, it was just way more than what we're asking for here. So, what is the difference? What are we doing differently? Because I mean, I believe it was like sixteen million or something crazy. Are we doing them on a different side of the road?
Yeah, that study, I haven't read it in its entirety. I know it exists, and I, my recollection is it recommended sidewalk on the west side of the street. I can't remember if that study talked about doing sidewalk on both sides. I just don't remember. But what we cost estimated was the limits that I mentioned, just on one side of the street only. We thought it's going to make sense to stay on the west side for most of it going north, because you're building into a hillside, a wall, which is easier than building over a drop-off, where you're going to have to build a wall.
So, we'll be on that side.
So, I think predominantly on the west side. However, once we get up by Kenmore Junior High on two-hundred-and-second, at that intersection with the school, we're recommending that it hop to the north there, because then hopefully we can tie that in with existing sidewalk that was built by development, and then stay on that north side up to sixty-first.
City manager.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple things. On the Log Boom Park water access, one thing we'll need to do if that one moves forward is manage expectations on what does water access mean, and what can the public really do when they access the water? Because we are seeing levels of fecal coliform that are higher than we want to. We don't know if we can manage that, if there's something we can do to affect those levels. And also, you know, the wind and storm debris that comes into that part of the park. So, I think improving water access at Log Boom Park is a worthy goal, but we just need to make sure we're clear with the public on what that means and that those expectations are managed. One question I have for you tonight is, is there a project or projects on any one of these three packages that you do not want to move forward?
All right. Hold that question. Councilmember Januski and Deputy Mayor.
Okay. The city manager just hit my comment right on the head. I think that most people saw the beach at Log Boom Park and said, oh, good, we finally get a swimming beach. And there's a decent chance that nobody's going to be able to go swimming there. So, we do need to manage that expectation if we think that the water quality isn't going to be good enough. I don't know if we still do the whole swimming beach thing, or if we make it maybe long up to the edge so it doesn't look so swimmable, but he pretty much hit that one on the head.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, I was going to comment on the Log Boom too. But having access to the water in just a gravel beach, where you get out there and skip rocks if you want to, and you can launch water, hand-powered water craft, that sort of thing, I think would be a benefit and enhancement. But it has to be made clear to the public. I'm in favor of the third alternative, the combination of the two. I see if you went with just the sidewalks, yes. I think the majority in the city would like to see better sidewalks. But if you tie in some recreation improvements, the waterways as well, you're going to get a much larger group of citizens that are pushing to approve this. And I think our chances of approval giving something for everybody are better in the third alternative. I do have concerns about what we do with St. Edward Park, and those ball fields are going to be funded some other way if they're not included in a bond issue, or are we doing that?
Yeah, that is possible. We'll have to look into that. But for example, if there's a project that you don't include in the bond measure, but you still want to fund, there are possibilities where you can dip into Strategic Opportunities Fund, or our REIT fund, or Park Impact Fees Funds. So, there's ways to bring together various fund balances to fund a project that doesn't make it onto the ballot measure.
Let's just go right on down the line. Councilmember Herbig.
I mean, to be honest, I would like all of this. I mean, I'll just be upfront. I would love to see all of this happen. But as in life, you have to choose between things you want and things you need. And as much as folks would like, you know, these parks projects, those are wants. They aren't necessary for, you know, they aren't necessary to our livelihood. They're necessary for us to get around. They aren't necessary to the, they just aren't as pressing as our need to be able to safely maneuver through our city and walk and bike. And personally, I would rather see, I'd like to see whatever, what was it, the option to the transportation package. And frankly, and again, I love the Tolt, the Tolt Trail proposal, but I, in a perfect world, I would actually go to, I would take the transportation package, do that, take out the four million dollars for the trail, and put that towards filling in sidewalk gaps along, you know, one-fifty-fifth, Simons, Eightieth, Seventy-third, school zones, Arrowhead, that sort of thing, and really address some of the pressing safety needs that we have throughout the city. Again, I would love to do all of this, but I think with our limited budget and, you know, really looking at what we need versus what we want, I would rather focus on the safety of our citizens rather than, you know, things are luxuries. I appreciate all the hard work you guys put in all of this. So, this is a really, this is, I mean, these are really great packages that you guys put together. And if we had unlimited funds, I would love to do all of this.
Councilmember Curtis.
As far as the ones that I would prefer not to be on this bond, one would be the Tolt Trail Phase Two. And I actually think that will be a great eventual project. And I would like to see it not only as an access point between Seventy-third and Eightieth, but also as kind of a nature, a way to get out in the middle of that swamp and see the wildlife and the birds and, you know, to enjoy that nature instead of just driving by and never really being able to see it. But I don't think this is the time. I don't think it's a priority that I would want to see it included now. The ball fields, I think that should be funded in a different way, as a specific project, if we, you know, want to go forward on that. And I'm, I don't think, asking people to redo sidewalks is a good use of this type of funding. If things wear out, that's our job to figure out how we're going to do replacement as things wear out. Plus, I don't want to do anything to lose those trees. So, I'd rather have crooked sidewalks than lose that row of trees.
Can I just jump in really quick on Tolt? The downside is, it's pretty expensive for the length that we're talking about. One reason we've put it in, though, is because it did poll well in that statistically valid survey in December. A project like this, I should say, in other words, trails and open space really polled well with the citizens. And so, this project kind of meets that. But that said, it is a lot of money for the length of trail we're talking about.
Councilmember Sperry.
Well, perfect segue. I actually walked on the dry side of that, the Tolt Pipeline potential route. And I've had concerns about the project for a while, mainly the cost and what we're actually getting for it. But something I saw when I actually walked it was on the side near Eightieth, it would have a tremendous impact on the houses around there, because there's lots of people that have, you know, these open space, and they have, you know, animals and all this kind of stuff. And I think that if we were to include it in some kind of a package, that without reaching out to the neighbors and making sure that that was all, you know, everybody was on board, that that could be really not a good thing. So. And as far as the nature walk and the trails, there's actually, I think there's some alternatives. You know, Swamp Creek is that way. Our new park, Twin Springs, has that. And then right off of Seventy-third, there is a wonderful open view of the wetlands that I think would, you know, some kind of a birding trail or something like that that got people off the road and in there, I think, could be done for a lot less than four million dollars. So, anyway, so that would be one that I would not like to see on a potential funding package. And I would concur, I believe council member, several council members have said, the St. Edward Ball Field, that if we move forward with that, to not have that part of a funding package. So, as far as which direction to go, it's a very interesting one, because I've been the one, pick one, pick one, pick one. Don't try to do it all. And the other part is, when I reviewed, I reviewed my MRC article here, one of the things is it has to be clearly written to identify specific identified needs. And, you know, the things we've heard from the community and the needs are definitely the sidewalks, you know, not having that. That's something that people want and that we don't have. But what we hear all the time, what people want are waterfront access or being access to the water. So, you know, at the end of the day, we're asking people to do something that most people, I mean, we're asking people to raise their own taxes, to be honest with you, if we do move forward with this. And sixty percent of the public has to say yes to it. And that's a pretty high bar. And so, you know, at the end of the day, it doesn't really matter what, let me rephrase that. So, some of the research shows that basically having, you know, multiple subjects, you know, if we did go with both the waterfront access and the sidewalks, may not be a great idea. But at the end of the day, it really matters what the citizens here believe is worth it to vote for or against. So, I'm still a little bit on the fence, but obviously, you know, I'm leaning more towards definitely the sidewalk projects, not the Tolts, not the St. Edwards. But the waterfront access, I know, is something that our community does get really excited about. The other piece to this, though, is going back to managing expectations. I appreciated the conservative budgeting, which I'm assuming means that there's sort of built-in more than, it's not like, here's the minimum we would need. Is that, kind of, am I hearing you correctly on that?
For Wanita, it's just a match. So, we would need a lot more money, and it could be a little city money, and it could be a lot of, hopefully a lot of grant money is the hope. Always want to supplant our own dollars with grant money if we can.
Yes. So, there's a multiplication factor, assuming the, assuming that we are able to get grants, correct?
But the other sidewalk estimates were conservative, but their estimates were zero percent design. And Deb and I were just reminding each other that also, all of our costs here are capital, design, right away permitting, construction costs. They do not include ongoing maintenance.
And that's, you know, those are the other pieces to this whole thing. It's like, you know, if we're asking people to do this, but yet we're really setting ourselves up to potentially asking for more in terms of maintaining. And then, you know, if it's two thousand and sixteen dollars, you know, I just want to kind of get this out here so we can start thinking about it. Well, maybe they're not built till 2018 or 2019. You know, what does that look like? So, I guess if we're going to go this far, I'd love to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up to not being able to meet the expectations of the public. You know, what is it that we need to have in place if indeed there's a bond measure? And if indeed this bond measure is approved, how do we make sure we're not like some transportation agencies that, you know, you don't ever quite get what you vote for? So, that's kind of a bigger question for all of us.
Well, I keep going back to zero percent design. You know, we did our best to be conservative. I think the sidewalk we're talking about, you know, does not include undergrounding costs. I don't see that you'd want to do that on sixty-eighth, Wanita. I don't, so that's not included. So, I expect power poles would stay up on Wanita. They are conservative numbers, but they didn't have a bunch of escalation factors, and it's hard to tell what's going to happen in the construction market. And there's, to me, that's where I get nervous, because volatile is not the right word, but there are things that we can't control when we do this work, and especially once you start digging in the ground.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith.
Well, you sort of hit on what I was, part of what my comment was, and that has to do with the expectations. And Councilmember Sperry mentioned on the costs, and that is especially, probably less on the safety improvements and more on the recreational improvements. And there are significant costs. So, it would be nice to at least make sure that we set a proper expectation as we go forward for the public, so if they know what that approximate annual cost will be. And on that expectation side, also on the Wanita Drive, because I know that that does have, because it relies on grants, I think it's really important that we let people know that if they're voting for something, they're going to assume it's going to be built no matter what, especially if they see the corridor, Wanita Drive corridor is being built. So, we need to actually, we need to be, I think, very clear on how we frame that discussion, so that that's, the grant side of that is apparent. And one other comment, that has to do with the ball fields. And, I mean, I said right up front, I like number three, because I do. It's clear. It's easy to understand. It covers a lot of what is important to the city. But that's also, five million dollars at Squire's Landing is a lot of money. And when I look at something that sort of has just popped up in the last two years or a year and a half as a project, and I know that we've been working on ball field issues for well over ten years, I want to see that third option, but I also really want to see us make sure we come up with a means to fund and address the ball field need if it's not included in there. And I don't think it needs to be included. I just want us as a council to make sure that we address that.
Your Honor. I apologize, as this was already mentioned, but back to managing expectations on Wanita. Chris has reminded me that the five million dollar grant match strategy that you see here would be over multiple grant funding cycles. A grant's funding cycle is typically two years, so you could see several two-year cycles. It could be six, eight, maybe even ten years of getting Wanita Drive with new sidewalks from one-seventieth all the way south to the city limit. So, that's another expectation that would be managed. As far as maintenance costs, we do have some parks, annual maintenance cost estimates in your packet, and I think you have all seen those. If all five If all five were built somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000 to $300,000 a year, more would be needed to be identified for maintenance costs.
All right. Any other questions?
So, Your Honor, I do have a question about what moves forward. Are you comfortable with what you see tonight, just moving forward for the 14th, and then you can kind of whittle things or change things? Or do you want to drop anything off now or add anything now?
All right, I guess that was the next question I had, was there's been a lot of people saying three. I've heard a couple of twos.
And, Your Honor, can I clarify my question one more time? So I'm not asking you to choose between option one, two, or three or anything like that. What I'm saying is, do you like what you see as far as park projects in option one? Do you like what you see as far as sidewalk projects in option two? And do you like what you see as far as the mix in option three? I'm hearing a lot of you say you just don't like Tolt. But do you want it to see the light of day on March 14th anyway, or do you want it taken off now?
I think we've also got the ball fields at St. Ed's in that same position. Councilmember Curtis.
I recommend taking both of those off for any proposed next steps, the St. Edward Ball Field and the Tolt.
Councilmember Herbig.
Yeah, I would like to see the Tolt taken off of two and maybe reassigned to gaps or something else. $4 million to sidewalks throughout the city would get us quite a bit, I think, so.
And I would like to see St. Ed's taken off and Tolt taken off. Councilmember Danuski.
I think as far as, I'm okay with seeing St. Edward's if we're just doing parks. I could take, I would like to see Tolt taken off of both. And if we needed to fill a spot in the sidewalk, saying, "I'm a fan of 73rd."
Okay, so on option one, if we removed both Tolt and St. Edward, that makes for a much smaller package. I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing, I'm just pointing that out for option one. But I'm also hearing that option one probably won't even move forward ultimately anyway. And then, so on option two, if you, with the sidewalks, if you remove Tolt, I'm hearing Councilmember Herbig say, "Keep the $4 million in there, and instead of doing Tolt, do sidewalk gaps or sidewalk replacements where it makes the most sense." And we could further develop that. Is there more interest in that?
Councilmember Curtis.
I still am not that interested in 61st Avenue.
So I guess I'm, this is a, who what? I guess I'm a little concerned. We're all six here tonight. One of us will be gone on the 14th. I just want to make sure, this is a big step, I just want to make sure that everybody's input is there. Councilmember Smith.
Yeah, I think, I think we're on the right track. I think one of the parts here that it's, when we have an open house, it would be nice to have input on more items rather than fewer items. So I guess what I'm saying is, even if we generally aren't in favor of the Tolt boardwalk, and I'm just picking that, honestly, I don't have a strong opinion about it one way or another because of the cost is so extraordinary. But it would be nice to have it part of the process to hear what the comments are. And maybe the comments will be something we haven't thought about. And the same with the ball fields, is that although this specifically says St. Edward athletic fields, I will say if there was a Parks and Rec bond issue specifically that went to the voters on Parks and Recs, I would think having some type of athletic field line item in there would be very important. One, for passage, because there's a lot of advocates out there that would work hard for it. But two, just to, again, get community input at this open house. And so I don't have a problem removing it. I just think if we're going to ask for the public's opinion, it would be nice to have fewer items to get opinions on rather than, or greater number rather than fewer number.
Good point. Deputy Mayor.
If you eliminate the Tolt Trail, and that's in the first two, that's in either-or, you eliminate that and St. Edward's, the only thing that is not included in the third choice is 61st. And I want to keep those trees there, even if it means you got a bumpy sidewalk. But I think it's not that, if we say, if we eliminate Tolt and the St. Edward ball fields, that doesn't mean we don't want to do them, it's just we don't want to include them in this package. And we want to try to figure out, I mean, I think we all would like to see all that. We'd like to see more pedestrian and sidewalk, bike trails, bike lanes and all that, too. But we're asking for the citizens to increase their taxes to fund a series of projects. Not that we don't want to do a lot more, but this package is just a package of so many projects. Okay, which are the ones we feel that the citizens are most likely to vote for and to tax themselves for? And I think what we're doing here in number three, I think, has a good chance of passing.
Councilmember Herbig.
I just want to respond to Councilmember Curtis's thoughts on 61st. I actually think if we're going to have sidewalks, we should have usable sidewalks. And I've walked those sidewalks. And, you know, if you had a stroller, or if you were on a skateboard, or if you were pushing us, or if you're older, they're practically unusable at this point. So I think if we're talking transportation, I think we do need to look at 61st, but we also need to do what we can to save the trees.
Councilmember Curtis.
A different direction than what Brent was mentioning, was if we remove Tolt and we remove St. Edward, parks, in essence, is mostly gutted. And when we look at the questionnaire that we asked recently, parks per se were not that important to our citizens. They're interested in waterfront. So a thought of, instead of having, giving the citizens three choices, which may be more confusing, maybe just give two choices. So sidewalks, bicycle, and trail, take off Tolt, put in some money for sidewalk gap closure, and then the waterways and walkways and waterways. So those are the two options we give the citizens, as opposed to give three options with some things that we don't think we want to do anyway. So that may be a less confusing way to present it.
But I see the advantage of, as Councilmember Smith had indicated, too. We're asking for choices, and we should give them choices to see what they've got to say. Councilmember Herbig.
Actually, I agree with Councilmember Curtis here. I think, I'm not hearing any strong support for number one here. And if we're not, if nobody here is going to champion it, I don't quite see the point in raising expectations or giving the public an expectation that number one could be, is something that we're behind. So I think it'd make more sense to talk about two or three.
Yeah, and you see, I'm very much in favor of Logg Boom Road to Denton and Squire's Landing. But those happen to be on number three also. But I'd also be happy in putting in some more money into Morelands to make it even more effective. But that's not on the list, and I'm not going to try to start adding stuff to the list that wasn't looked at. So, anyway.
Maybe we should ask our consultant. I mean, they may have a feeling. But I think giving people two choices that are, they're different enough, they really feel like two different choices. Even though there's a lot of overlap in the 68th and the Juanita, they feel to be like two different options. And I agree, I think the parks and recreation by itself, we wouldn't be that happy if all this is and said, "We want that." I don't think we would throw out the other two and go for that one. So I don't think we should even offer it as a viable option. And if we can tune number two up and make it even better, say we're going to do some more sidewalks to fill some gaps, I think that would make that an even stronger statement. It's a really clear decision point for people, I think.
Mrs. Overlyes.
I was going to say that we have a whole world of feedback from the community that we got over a very long period of time and through a statistically valid survey. And, you know, as staff, we struggled with the open house and the meaning of the open house. And we feel it very right to talk to the community, to let them know where we're at, and to tell them that we kind of had these idea packages. But I think the statistically valid survey and what you've heard to date gives you the largest amount of information that you're going to have. We didn't necessarily view the open house as part of the decision-making process. Obviously, the community will come and talk to you on the 14th, as they should, and give you feedback. But you also have a lot of information that you've already received that frankly should, you know, give us the guidance to put these, at least draft, packages together.
I agree with Chris. The open house is more of an update to the community and a chance for them to look at things and ask questions, more than to get their input. Because the amount of input you would get at that open house is miniscule compared to all the other input you've gotten so far.
It just didn't feel right to come and ask you to choose a package to statistically test without touching in with the community to have that conversation about where we're at.
Councilmember Herbig, did I see you? All right.
I think I am still a little confused now. So I understand the open house is just to kind of update our community, but then we're going to take something forward to do another survey.
Correct.
And so this discussion will be had on the 14th of whether we want three packages, two packages, if we want to change package number two. Is that what you're saying?
I think to clarify, our conversation has always been, if we choose to, we would take one package to the voters. So I don't think there's ever been the intent of taking multiple packages and putting multiple things on the ballot. It's all been about a whittling down process to have one package that we put on the ballot.
Got it. So the survey is to say, here's the package we recommend, would you support that?
Correct.
Got it. Okay. Then I'll put my vote in for the 14th. I want number three.
All right. Anything else? So then...
Wait, Stacy's there.
Oh, yeah, Stacy. I keep not looking that way.
I know. I'm going to go sit down there.
Trying to avoid me.
So what Chris has said actually almost makes me want, package one, to stay on the open house, because you're framing, hey, we've got this parks thing, we've got this sidewalk thing. It really frames how you get to the walkways and waterways.
Yeah, it does.
As how you can make, you know, the wants and the needs all meet together in one package. And so I think that that could be a message that's useful.
And we clearly heard through our community outreach that both were desired, parks and sidewalk and waterfront.
So I'd like to see them all at the open house.
So all with Tolt and wall fields there? I'm seeing a lot of yeses.
I think I could throw a...
At least for the, to show what we got and how we got there. Yes, no, maybe?
I think it builds the case.
Okay.
I think it builds the case of where we got to option three.
Okay.
So it gives the citizens more information to our thought processes.
All right. So, March 14th, open house. March 14th, again, we're going to select what we want after the open house to go for a statistically valid survey that will be done in March and April. And then April, May, we're going to decide whether to put it on the ballot, and if we do, which package. Anything else?
So may I clarify, please?
Please.
So we're leaving for the sake of the open house and coming back to council on the 14th, we're leaving the three packages as presented today.
That's what I'm hearing. That's what I'm seeing nodding. That's what I'm seeing with all sorts of forms of communication.
I think what changed it for me was, the open house is more an information time. It's not going to be the major decisive, we're going to change our direction. We already have asked the people a lot of specific information in a standard way. An open house is, a few people show up, and they shouldn't represent our whole community. So I think that was a difference, as I understood what the open house really was.
And that the open houses and these packages reflect the community input that we've received to date.
Deputy Mayor.
I'm okay with all three packages being presented, but there needs to be some way to explain to the people at this open house what our deliberations have been and how we got to number three. We considered these other two, it boiled down to the number three, the best of both the needs and the wants. If that's not explained to the people somehow that are visiting and coming to the open house, then they'll be thinking they have the choice. And I don't think we're asking them for the choice. We're asking them, I think we're zooming in on number three, and we're trying to find out with a potential survey whether they'll vote to pay for it. Or are things still up in the air? And we haven't made a decision on number three. Why would we present all three plans without an explanation of what we've just been talking about here for the last hour?
Because you haven't made a decision, the test of the public support would be the statistically valid survey, once you've made the decision on whether you want to, which one you want to put out for the survey, a parks bond only, pen and bike, or the combination one.
That's right, well...
But you haven't made, you won't be making that decision until the 14th. So what you're showing the public is, based on the input that was received through the public process, these three packages represent alternatives based on the input.
Okay, so what we've discussed tonight doesn't make any difference?
It kind of, it will make a difference on the 14th.
We're going back to square one after this open house.
It reinforces that we're in agreement with these three packages to present to the public. We're just reinforcing what staff has been working on.
Okay, all right.
Can I make a comment? I actually think tonight was very productive. Oh, sorry.
Hold that thought. Councilmember Herbig.
I just need to say, I don't understand the point of including Tolt in number three if those of us that are generally supportive of number two, if those of us that are generally supportive of it aren't supportive of Tolt in number two. I mean, I think that there's an argument that there's a better use of those funds, and that presenting, presenting kind of that thought process and that, in a more refined package, using the funds from Tolt to the public might get us a different response. And I would say the same about the ball fields also. If the general consensus is that we're not going to be putting the ball fields on the ballot, and we've heard that from almost everybody here, then why would we include the ball fields in what we present at the open house? It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I think it's, unless somebody's been watching this meeting, I think it presents a false narrative to the folks that come out to the open house, and folks will be looking at our website later. And I also think it's too early for us to say that we've settled number three. I think a lot of folks think we've settled number three, but I don't think we should be saying that right now until we actually take a vote on the 14th. So, I don't know, I'm just, I want to make sure that whatever we present is what we think is the best possible versions of those three packages. And we've already said we don't like the ball fields on this package, that we want to look at other ways of on that. We've already said that we don't, those of us that are supportive of number two have already said that Tolt doesn't make a lot of sense, maybe isn't the best use of those safety dollars, and that if we were to do a package of that size, we'd want something to reallocate those funds. So I just think it's a little duplicat, not duplicatious, but I don't think it's completely transparent with the public for us to present those, present what we have here to the public if we know in our heart of hearts, that if we go with one of those two packages, we will be changing it.
If I've got, if we have the open house, and I've got 50 people that come and say, "I want Tolt," well, I'm going to reconsider whether I want Tolt on there, because that'd be a significant number of people that said they wanted a project. So, you know, I'm not going to rule it out, but I do see your point.
Well, maybe a sub-alternative or something. And especially with the ball fields, I haven't heard anybody here say that we want to put the ball fields on, I mean, maybe Councilmember Danuski, I don't know. But I haven't heard anybody here say that we seriously want to put the ball fields on a ballot measure if we were in a theoretical world to go with number one. I don't see anybody here saying that we want to do the ball fields through the ballot measure, so why would we include it in an open house? I just don't think it sends the right message. I think we can include it in a narrative of this was an option we looked at on the 22nd, and this is where we decided, this is what we decided to present at the 14th. But I don't think it, I just don't think it looks, I don't think it's being completely open and honest with the citizens if we are putting forward things that we all have fairly openly discussed, saying that we, at the end of the day, aren't going to support likely, that we aren't likely to support.
Well, maybe putting those thoughts together, what if we did parks and leave that one item off the ballpark? And then, but people say, I really want parks, and hey, this one's really cheaper, too. So we don't have to add something to bring it up to the same price as the others. And then for the second one, the walkways and safety, we can take off Tolt and put on some X amount of money for sidewalk gaps. So it's a little bit different than we've had so far, but it's more clearly specifically sidewalk and safety. So take off the things we're unlikely to think we want anyway, but Tolt is still there on number one, if people say, I really like that Tolt after all. So, I don't know, that may be an option of kind of cleaning up a little bit. And so clearly, people have parks, and it doesn't have to be the same amount. And then safety, and then the combo.
Councilmember Smith.
So when I said I wanted more options for comment on than fewer, that was prior to the clarification from Chris, that this, or Debbie, that this is more just to present our findings rather than to get public input. And so there is a difference there. And I was under the assumption this open house was going to be just like a public hearing almost, where you get input and then you take that input in for your decision. But if, but if it really is, if we're a lot more defined on what we want, it does kind of make sense to try to fine-tune it to something that is palatable to all of us, so that we can be more productive in that meeting possibly. I don't know. I know it's getting late, and we're all dying to get through this issue, but it's, I don't know.
Councilmember Danuski.
So for me, as far as the Ballfields go, if we were going to do a measure that was just parks, I think it makes sense to put the Ballfields in because we were going to find some other way to do it, so why wouldn't we just put it in the measure? So I would actually leave it in the parks one. It's just, when I was talking Ballfields, I was thinking more on three. I wouldn't want it included, so. I do think it's a valid option for one.
So where are we at?
So I'm hearing, leave the parks package as it is, and I'm hearing on the transportation one to take out Tolt and put in a chunk of money for sidewalk repair slash replacement. I haven't heard if you want it to be an equivalent amount of money, $4 million, or if you want it to be half. Or if that's the way you want to go.
Chris, you said sidewalk repair replacement. Wasn't it sidewalk gaps?
Oh, yes. I'm getting tired, too.
Sidewalk replace, replacement, repair, gaps.
Yes.
All three were gaps.
Could be. I'd give yourselves the flexibility.
Councilmember Smith.
I would tend to think if it's going to be something referred to as gaps, that we would probably want to lower the dollar amount some, because to just say $4 million for gaps of sidewalks is a pretty abstract thing. And it seems like maybe at that point, we'd want to, you know, cut it back a little bit, so there's less ambiguity there.
Could you see any of that money going towards 61st? Maybe not the whole thing, but pieces of it that are really bad.
Well, 61st would be funded, right?
It's already in number two.
Oh, in two?
Yeah.
Councilmember Herbig.
We all know how expensive sidewalks are, and I think maybe not specifying just gaps, but gaps and new sidewalks. I mean, we have needs going down 181st, there are needs all over the place. So I wouldn't just specify only gaps between existing sidewalks. There's a lot we could do with $4 million, and we would run through that money and still have projects that we would want to get done. So I wouldn't advocate cutting that amount.
And if I can add to that, like, we have substandard sidewalks on 181st, like you just mentioned, Councilmember Herbig, and I could see using that money as a TIB grant match to replace substandard sidewalks in our downtown.
So I have a question. So would we identify those then for this meeting on the 14th, so that the citizens would know what those gaps are? Or is that something that we would just, just shoot by the hip?
Tell them to trust us.
Well, I just know with a bond issue, it just seems like the more definitive we can be, the more likely we'd have of getting it passed. And so that's why I asked the question.
I wouldn't, I don't think I'd be able to do that between now and the 14th. I mean, that packet gets uploaded 10 days before, so I don't...
But can I help answer that question?
Yeah.
So you got John Vicente working on an ADA inventory, meaning places in our city where we're deficient with ADA, you know, sidewalks in particular, and that's coming forward in March?
Yes. I just got a draft map from him with gaps, and I haven't even looked at it yet.
So that ADA assessment is going to show a draft map with gaps? And what you could do is, on the 14th, you could give direction that it would be sidewalk gaps. But then, before a real package gets crystallized, you know, later this spring, we could actually identify more gaps in March, April.
I'm going to channel Dominic with EMC Research, and we've heard this from Natasha with Burke, is that, you know, the actual language we put on the ballot is very short. I think we have less than 100 words. So the language on the ballot measure would say gaps. But certainly, information we could provide between April, you know, through the summer, factual information could include gap locations.
Yep.
Councilmember Herbig.
Rob's answering my question.
I have no idea what we're doing now. Is anybody?
Councilmember Sperry.
Oh, I was just saying, after all that, I felt like we went around and around and back again. And I really don't, I totally am not sure what it is that we are going to be presenting as options at the open house, so.
Can I make a recommendation?
Might be a really good idea.
That is well, we're so enthusiastic about this.
So I'd leave option one as is, and then option two, I'd take out Tolt and replace it with sidewalk gaps. I would recommend a lower number in the $2 to $3 million range, instead of keeping it at $4 million. And then I'd leave three as is.
So are you, by lowering the prices, are you actually changing the likelihood of selection because one is cheaper than another one?
You could look at it that way.
That's okay.
No, we're the ones that are making the selection.
First one is already $2 million less.
I mean, we're the ones choosing what's going to go on the ballot, so what are you concerned about?
Oh, I'm just... Are we the ones?
Well, we are, yeah.
I mean, having the open house.
But the open house is us presenting where we are. It's not, we're not taking a survey of the people at the open house.
We're going to be listening to them and the public and what the public wants, so, I mean, if people say they want two, or they want one because it's less expensive, or for whatever reason, I certainly am going to listen to them.
Right, but we spent tens of thousands of dollars on a statistically valid survey that went out to almost the entire city.
After we pick which one.
No, we've already done one, though, is what staff has already said. We've already done that. To weigh the 50 people or 150 people that show up, you know, in three weeks, over that might be foolhardy. I would posit, as nice as they may be...
Doesn't it? I mean, it turned out...
Oh, 21,000 people show up.
I would rather trust them.
So Mr. Mayor, I think that Rob had a really good idea. Basically, leave number one as the same, replace the Tolt Boardwalk and Bridge Trail with maybe like a $2 to $3 million sidewalk gap fund, and then leave number three the same.
So are we clear?
Well, is it $2 million, or is it $3 million?
2.5.
It's three. Split the difference between two and four.
Okay, it's three. Done.
It's every million on the second.
So, are we there?
Yeah.
All right.
Excuse me, can I clarify? We're lowering package two by $3 million?
No.
No.
Okay, what was the $3 million that just happened?
One.
Lowering number one?
Lowering number two by one.
By $1 million.
Correct.
And one trail.
I got that.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item, adoption of ordinance number 16-0416, establishing administrative provisions for a business and occupation tax. Mrs. Gregory.
Thank you very much, Mayor, council members. So tonight, for your consideration, is the second part of the business and occupation tax implementation process. Ordinance 16-0416 establishes how the tax will be administered by the city. As you know, the Washington State Department of Revenue does not administer local BNO taxes. This ordinance complies with the model ordinance established by the state and includes such provisions as how often a tax return is required, when the tax is due to the city, how long the business is required to keep their records available. It establishes our right to audit their records, what will happen if the tax isn't paid, or there's a default, and establishes a process how the business can file an appeal, and other miscellaneous provisions. Because all cities with a BNO tax in Washington must comply with the language and provisions of the model ordinance, as we have, I don't feel that will be a hardship for any of the businesses, since the process is already in place in the city, other cities where they do business. So what we'll likely do is make our tax return available on our website and publish the notice of the ordinance and the tax obligation, and communicate with the businesses likely to be involved. With that, are there any questions about this ordinance?
Councilmember Smith.
I have one on the, obviously, the enforcement end, that's something we would like to think we never have to deal with. But do you, does, would the city then, or you, do you cross-reference your BNO tax receipts with the state and so, and in what they report?
The way...
Do you see what my question is?
I believe I do.
So just to know that it's consistent, I'm not doubting that they're not going to tell us the right amount. I'm just wondering, is that something that you would, you would, you would, the state and the city would ever check numbers together to make sure that they're both consistent?
It's probably not likely, because when an organization reports to the state, they report for all of their locations within the state as one. So it would not be, we would not be able to identify what portion would be attributed to Kenmore.
Okay. No, no, that makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you. First of all, thank you for completing all this and all the detail. Do you see any problems in terms of administratively? Is this an administrative burden on you or the staff, or is it pretty straightforward?
No, we already have a process in place for sending out notices for gambling tax compliance quarterly. We envision that we would send these out quarterly. We're not obligated to send the forms out to the businesses. They're obligated to know that there is a tax.
Sure.
And to comply with it. But, you know, we'll do as much as we can to publicize that it is in effect. But I don't anticipate this is going to be a burden for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number 16-0416, establishing administrative provisions for business and occupation tax. Moved. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Please take the roll.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Viness?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry?
Yes.
Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, staff report. Mr. Carlinsey.
Just a reminder that we do have a council meeting a week from tonight. Part of that council meeting will be a joint meeting with the school board. And also, just invitation to come to the State of the City address on March 16th at lunchtime, and at Inglewood, what is it, Country Club, I guess?
Golf course.
Golf course. And, yeah, so come to that and let Nancy, Meehan, or me know if you want to get registered for that. And that's all I have.
All right. Council comments, reports, initiatives. Councilmember Smith.
The only thing I have is that it's nearly official that the North Shore Senior Center will be running its own operation on starting March 1st. We still have a couple of issues we have to get through, but that looks like that's happening. And I think it's appropriate to at least let you know, because especially after a discussion that we just had, I have zero details on what it would be or how much it would be, but there has been informal discussion about, or I should just say, thrown out there, about having some kind of a potential maintenance and operations voter-approved initiative that would have to do with the senior center. I have no other information for you, because we haven't had any formal discussion on it. But I want you to know that that's at least something that was mentioned to me that may be needed, and I haven't seen enough of the records to know, but we have a long ways to go to get there, if that's the case. But if you have any, any specific concerns or questions, feel free to contact me.
Are they a separate taxing district?
Yes. It's, their boundaries are the same boundaries as the North Shore School District.
Councilmember Sperry.
Thank you at this time. Thank you.
Councilmember Curtis.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Herbig.
Nothing to add.
Councilmember Danuski.
Nothing for me.
Deputy Mayor.
Nothing for me.
I was down in Olympia with Dow Constantine. We got a lot of comments for our regional thinking, and they were very appreciative of Kenmore being there and lending eye candy to the different legislators that we went around with. So, also, the House Speaker Chop is asked, requested a meeting with me about St. Ed's, and so we're trying to get something set up, and we'll see if it'll work out. Other than that, I believe that is all for tonight.
We have an exact session?
No, we have exact.
Yes.
And then potential action afterwards.
There is potential action. So we're going to adjourn to executive session.
But not adjourn the meeting.
We're going into, and the executive session will last...
20.
20 minutes, and there will be possible action relating to the executive session taken in. And we're going to executive session, first one to RCW 42.30.110, one subsection I, potential litigation. Okay, Kenmore City Council is back in session from executive session, and the chair will entertain a motion to authorize the city manager to settle a lien for gambling tax delinquency and execute a settlement agreement with Ryvan LLC, Ray Landegrin, and Brenda and Leon Reickley to pay the city the amount of $34,642.88. The agreement must be approved as to form by the city attorney and include a condition that the city will be in the primary... be in the primary position. And Ryvan LLC, Ray Van Landegrin, and the Reickleys will be in second position when it comes to collecting delinquent penalties, taxes, and interest from Dale Decker and the Didi Bar and Grill property, the original debtors. The city manager is authorized to perform all actions necessary to implement this motion. Is there a motion?
So, moved.
Second. Moved and seconded. Clerk, please take the roll. Slowly.
Danuski?
Yes.
Councilmember Sperry? Yes. Councilmember Curtis?
Yes.
Mayor Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Herbig?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Viness?
Yes.
7-0.
Motion passes 7-0.
Now, we just stare awkwardly at each other.
We can turn. What do we do?
We can go home. You just have to stay here.
How can we when we said 20 minutes?